Good afternoon, everyone. This is the regular monthly meeting of the Dayton Stormwater Committee. It's Wednesday, October 16th, and I'm calling the meeting to order at 1:06 PM. We're in the upper-level meeting room in the Old Town Hall, 1111 Somerset Avenue in Dayton. This is a public meeting, being video and audio recorded for posting on YouTube, and this is also a Zoom meeting. And I see we have people on Zoom, so all votes will be roll-call votes. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, two republics on which it stands, one nation, undegowed, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Attendants, Mr. Phillips.
Here.
Tavia.
Katania here.
Caldonia. Mr. Ferry.
Here.
Here. And Mr. Woods.
Present.
Present. And Nancy Goulats, here. Online, we have Greg Moorhouse, James Pearson, and Alexandra Morrison. Sitting in from the Board of Select, or is that just to have Leanne? That's me?
Honorary.
Oh, honorary? Okay. And did you get the names of the people in the audience? Okay, thank you. Mr. Pearson, are you on?
Yes, I'm here.
Okay. This is Agenda Item 4A, Brook Street Solar. I thought this was just going to be a "everything's going along fine" report. However, I received an email from Ahmed Hafiz advising me that the work on the basin was supposed to start, I believe, Tuesday. However, this went out to all the appropriate people, and there was a response from Mrs. Caldonia from the Conservation Commission. The permit, water conditions from the Conservation Commission expired. And at our August meeting, I believe it was, and certainly last month, Mrs. Caldonia advised Mr. Hafiz that that permit needs to be renewed, extended, something. Well, nothing was done. As a result of that, I sent an email, which I copied all of you on, advising Mr. Hafiz that -- oh, and the Conservation Commission through Mrs. Caldonia issued a stop-work order. So I followed up with an email to Mr. Hafiz advising him that, first of all, he didn't think he needed a permit to dig up the basin. He doesn't understand. A stormwater permit was issued for the project. You have to keep the project permit active. If you're approaching the deadline when it's supposed to end, you're supposed to extend it. This is just what you do with permits. So anyhow, I did send him a follow-up email and advise him that although he had permission, has permission from the Planning Board and a contingent conditional approval from the Stormwater Committee, he has to comply with all the regulations that are in place, including Planning Board, Stormwater, Conservation Commission, any other town official who has oversight of the project, such as the Building Commissioner. Well, now that the permit has not been extended, renewed, whatever, from the Concom, and it has expired, this is the violation of the vote we took, which means our vote is contingent on everything continuing on. The fact that they don't have a stormwater permit also means that they don't have -- excuse me. The fact that they didn't renew their Concom permit also means they don't have a vote from us that is active right now. I told him the simplest thing is get the permit straightened out, Concom, you can resume work, and our permit, our vote, our last vote, which is conditional, you will have met the conditions. I did not hear back from him. I know he's on vacation. So that's where we are with Brook Street. Mrs. Caldonia, you said you made a site visit. You want to give the committee an update, please?
Yeah, I had gone there yesterday because I, you know, read through the email and didn't get a quick response from anyone. So I went there yesterday, and there was some machinery there. There were old erosion controls. It looks like the basin had already been started. The engineer had no idea that this was happening, which was even more crazy to me.
The engineer, Nick Vassadola?
Yeah. He didn't know that it was scheduled. But I went back this morning, and I was able to catch the contractor and let him know that the conservation permit expired. One of the workers asked, well, you know, can we just do this? And what about this? And I said, well, none of it's your problem, you know? It's not, it's a problem. But they had been informed that the permits were all set.
So did they stop work?
Yeah, but I have to keep an eye on it to make sure.
Okay.
Yeah.
It might be advisable to notify the police department if they see any activity there.
Okay.
They should question it because we've -- and when this situation gets straightened out, then you can notify the police department that it's okay to resume work, and we'll let them know. But they don't communicate. I mean, I would have thought their engineer would have been involved, but I think part of the reason is, obviously, when he has conferences with Nick, there's a cost involved, which, in this particular case, might have saved him some money. But that's not our situation. But so to the Stormwater Committee members, I sent that email out. Does anybody have any questions on the email that I sent out indicating what technically our position is? Because it was a contingent vote. Anything? Anybody? Okay. Any questions or comments from?
Has that last email that you sent, Lisa, this morning, has he responded?
No.
So we have no response at all from that email?
Just a response to yes, yesterday's email.
He didn't respond to the -- hasn't responded yet to the email that I sent out after Lisa sent the first one that told him to stop work. So I haven't heard. Bottom line is, they brought this on themselves. But anyhow, before I get to you, Mr. Pearson, do you have any comments? I mean, this isn't your problem, obviously, but you're in the loop on what's happening on Brook Street.
Yeah, I feel I'm falling in a loop at this point, and I will await further instruction.
Mrs. Bossolet, did you have a question?
Just so, does it have to come back to stormwater?
No, no.
Or it just has to be?
And what my email said to Mr. Hafiz was, technically, you don't have approval of the Stormwater Committee. Because ours was conditioned on everything would be okay with the Planning Board, the Concom, and any other town official involved with the project. The fact that this Concom permit has expired affects a major condition of what our vote was. So as soon as they get that straightened out, then our vote continues on. But for right now, we probably will stop work order, even though we haven't issued it, because Concom already did. But that's the situation.
Last week, they were somewhere, I guess in the back, I don't know, such as just over through. And this week, they've been working since Tuesday.
Is it, is it a local contractor? Or is it? It is? Okay. Does anyone have any questions, comments, or anything about Brook Street? Okay, if not. You don't hear from Sun East Way? Or from?
No. Hunter's Hill.
Okay. Could I get a motion to take Agenda Item 6 out of order? It's the request to extend Hunter's Hill stormwater permit to December 31st, 2028. Very appropriate, considering the message we just had.
Go move it.
We have a motion. Is there a second to take number 6 out of order?
Second.
Any discussion, hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Is that a unanimous aye? Come up to the podium.
I couldn't yell loud enough, yeah.
Good afternoon. Good afternoon, Lee Castiglione, representing the owner of Project Now, LPH Hunter's Hill LLC, which is an entity of Longville Homes. And as we had discussed.
Excuse me. Could you grab that middle mic, right? No, right here, right in front of Dave?
Sure.
Because just move it over closer so that anyone can hear you, please. Okay. Do you want to start over?
Lee Castiglione, representing the current project owner of the Hunters Hill LLC, which is a wholly-owned entity of Longville Homes. We, as we had discussed, the original permit was due to expire next month, and since we're still in the early stages of the project with 106 buildings to build, clubhouse, and all the other infrastructure, obviously, we needed to extend that. And our current projection for the project duration through completion would be December, the end of 2028, four years. So that's what we're asking for as an extension.
Does anyone have any questions or comments? Mr. Pearson, did you hear that request for an extension for stormwater permit for Hunter's Hill?
Yes, I did.
Do you have any questions, comments, or anything?
No, I do not.
Okay. Hearing none. Is there a motion to grant the extension of the stormwater permit to, is it Longville Homes?
I believe that the permit was issued in Longville Homes.
Okay.
At the time, yes.
With the new expiration date of December 31st, 2028.
Go moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye, everybody. You're all set.
While we have you here, I'm just going to give you a brief update on the status of the project.
We didn't plan that Brook Street thing.
Yeah, some things are not planned. Evan Watson, W Engineering, the engineer of the preserve of Hunter's Hill. Last time we were here, you asked for some updates as things progressed, so I figured this would be a good opportunity for that. So at the community center, we've met with the Concom agent to review the erosion controls that were put out. The lot, the area has been cleared, and they're getting ready to start construction of the foundation. And that is slated to be started next week. They filed for their foundation permit. We've also met with the wetland scientist on site with the contractor yesterday, and he's going over the schedule, and they're looking to start enhancement area this week. So that should be in, within this planting season. And then I also just brought a couple pictures of the detention basin. Take one and pass. I brought four, so.
Okay.
They're all the same. That's just one copy.
If you just give one to Mrs. Cora, and then we'll share these. Where is the, where is the building going to be in relationship to these pictures?
It's nowhere near that.
Oh, okay.
So that is one of the detention basins. That's on the very north side of the project. So obviously, when we start developing a project, we want to put in the stormwater BNP's first, so the area that they're working on in the next phase. But the first phase already had detention basin installed, and this is the detention basin for the next phase. So you can see it's well constructed, and it's starting to fill up with water. So the fore bay is completely full, but as the, we actually haven't had too many rain events, to be honest with you. So, and each rain event, they've actually opened up the catch basins and things along the way that they've already installed. So now those are starting to take water, and it's filling up the deep pond section of itself. When I, when I went down, I didn't get a photo of it, but in the fore bay, a big flock of ducks flew away, there's frogs floating in the water, and it's already starting to be utilized by the wildlife there. So it's, it's pretty good.
What a duck spot.
Yeah, the seasons are. Yeah, yeah, sorry.
Pick right up on that.
We've got some, we've got some hunters on committee.
So, yeah, and so I didn't send an email so nobody can see, but.
You had a beautiful blue-sky day to do it. Look at the clouds. Even the clouds are in the pond.
Yeah, the grass is taken in, and then those little fingers that you see there, those will start growing wetland vegetation, probably in the spring. It might be a little bit late for that, but that's the idea there. Fore bay goes to.
What are those things that look like they're going to be waterfalls?
Yeah, those are the fingers.
Oh, okay.
So on a low-flow situation, the water will go into the fore bay, and then it makes a path through that path, and that gives the opportunity for the wetlands plants to uptake.
Oh, like a meandering stream?
Yes.
Okay.
So it increases the time of contact with the plants there, so.
So that'll be more like a marsh later on?
Yes. Yeah, we'd expect that when you start growing up with like cattails and that type of stuff.
Mm-hmm. Does it get seeded or not?
They didn't seed it yet because we didn't want, if there was any dirty water and everything in there, to kind of mess with that, because that seed is expensive. So once we look at the spring, if it needs supplemental planting, we can add the seed. I expect that the seed that's there should start to take fairly. So. Glad we got the seed. Just fore bay, it's kind of cascade, cascade, fore bay. Yeah, so that's a fore bay, and that stays full of water, and then the water will kind of go through that little path, and then on a larger storm, obviously, it will just fill up and go right over it. And then the elevation of the water of the deep section should be at the same level, eventually. It's not there yet. It's going to take some time for that to happen.
It does look like a waterfall without water.
Yeah.
So they also have inspections.
Yep.
Yeah.
I think they emailed you a package about that waterfall.
Yeah, not that one. Yeah, so you wouldn't get copied on those, right? The SWIP.
Yeah, yeah.
There was a little.
This is a better picture, because when you look at it this way, it looks like the waterfall.
Oh, yeah.
When you see it this way, then you can, you see the division.
The first picture was about a week ago, and then the next one was just yesterday. You could see that the grass really took off.
Yeah.
There is a rut there. You've probably seen the SWIP report. It's not in these photos, but I don't, I forgot to look, but they did add, like, across the access to kick the water off to the side, so it just doesn't rut anymore.
Okay.
So moving ahead, we have the three foundations in the ground, right, with the buildings going around. We have one home.
One home's complete.
One home's complete. It's set up as a sales office.
I was going to say, have you moved in? Because you're going to have it as an office.
Yes.
Okay.
So that's all set up with little parking areas, so people have to park on the grass and whatnot. So that's all set up. And then the, there's two homes that was part of the existing approval that weren't built before.
Okay.
And then the sewer treatment plant is mostly installed, and I think we're meeting on Friday to go over the final punch list, and that should be activated. By the end of the year. By the end of the year, yep. So making a lot of progress out there. I was actually able to drive my rear-wheel-drive car all the way around the whole thing, so it was, it's good, it's nicely smooth. Most of the lot is paved, so. That's the update.
Okay.
It's good stuff, no problem.
Does anybody have any questions for Hunter's Hill regarding that project? So when we have active projects, they'll be on the agenda each month. Doesn't mean, it may be just an update, anything new on Hunter's Hill. By the same token, we'll keep you on the email list for the agendas, and if something comes up, you just show up at the meeting and tell us what it is you want us to know, or, or if anything arises, a problem, you'll be on the agenda so we can, we won't have to defer you to another month, and we can discuss it. Okay?
Very good, thank you.
Okay, thank you for coming in.
Thanks, Evan.
Okay. Going back to Agenda Item 4B, MACS Rujo. Mr. Pearson, are you still waiting for information on, from that project? This is the big one behind the Rujos.
Yeah, I have not received anything further on that. I, last I recall, I believe, there were some ASBILs, I think, that were going to be forthcoming on that, and I've not seen anything or heard anything further on that.
Under Agenda 5, I'll come back to Agenda Item C, 4C in a minute. Agenda Item 5, Active Project Updates, Weston and Sampson. Do you have anything on, we just did the MACS. Do you have anything on Blue Wave Solar? Greg Moorhouse and Alexandra are here. If you have any comments, we can take this one next.
So.
We still got a quorum? Yeah, we, okay. Hold on, Mr. Pearson. I'm going to entertain a motion to take Agenda Item 5A out of order. Is there a motion?
So moved.
A second.
A motion, a second, to take Agenda Item 5A, Blue Wave Solar, Tremont Middle Streets out of order. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, aye, aye. Okay. Did you have anything, Mr. Pearson?
So for Blue Wave Solar, the only thing that I've been doing on that has been relative to a certificate of compliance that's before the Conservation Commission. Only a little while ago, I received an updated ASBIL plan that was being submitted pursuant to that certificate of compliance, which we're doing a review on for a hearing that's going to be before the Conservation Commission tomorrow night. I don't really have any other updates aside from that.
Okay. Mrs. Caldonia, do you have anything on Agenda Item 5A, since it's going to Concom?
Just that Weston and Sampson issued their initial period due letter to Conservation, and in response, the ASBILs had been updated by Level Design. Sorry, am I misspeaking? I don't know if it's Level Design, whatever from Rich Ricchio is with. And then now Weston and Sampson is reviewing it again for tomorrow night's meeting.
Okay. Not to put you on the spot, but you think this is going to be the final thing for this one tomorrow?
I think so, as long as there's no major engineering issues.
Okay. So the, you have, the Concom has the information from Weston and Sampson?
We have the initial, but now we're waiting.
Okay.
Today, they should have a final.
Okay. James, is somebody going to Zoom into the Concom meeting tomorrow night?
No, we don't do Zoom.
Oh, you don't do Zoom? Well, that's, is anyone planning to email anything to Concom for tomorrow night's meeting?
So we anticipate that Brianna Summers from Weston and Sampson will be a participant tomorrow night with the Conservation Commission, yeah.
Okay. All right. I met her at one of the meetings, okay. Anything else? Does anyone on the committee have any questions on Blue Wave? That's Tremont Middle. Okay, hearing none. Let me just check. Agenda item, let's see. Agenda Item 5D. Can I get a motion to take that one out of order, please?
So moved. Second.
Okay. A motion and a second to take Agenda 5D, 0 Elm Street, out of order. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, aye. Unanimous vote. Does anybody have anything on this one? Any kind of an update, or anyone visited the site, or? Last time they were in, it was about clearing the land to make a staging area, but I haven't been by it. Have you been by there lately, Tom?
Yeah, I didn't walk the property. Yes, the staging area is trapped, it's good. That's all upgraded.
Right.
So, so taking control of that, it's not great. Yeah, things moving along, the structures, the external part of the structure is pretty much up. Moving along.
Okay. Mr. Pearson, did you have anything on 0 Elm Street? This is the.
Are we talking about Sun East Way?
No, no. 5D, 0 Elm Street.
Okay.
Yeah, I do, I do not have any new information to share on.
Lisa, do you have something on Sun East Way?
No.
Okay, so.
Move it on that.
Okay. Um, I'm just, I'm just trying to see what can be. I think we've got everything we need here that, oh, no, actually, could I get a motion to take Agenda Item 8, New Business Out of Order? Because I want Mr. Pearson to hear this.
Go move.
A motion, is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Agenda Item 8, New Leaf Energy Project, Mained Lane Area. I heard about this because I was at a Concom meeting a couple of months ago, and this, the gentleman, Mr. Smith, was before, Dean Smith, was before the Concom. And on his way out, I stopped to, I stopped him to find out if this was a solar project, and all he said was it was a, I was thinking solar farm, he just said it was an energy project. So I gave him my card and email address. He did get in touch with me around the end of August into early September, it was the end of August, and he wanted to set up a conference call, a minimum of 30 minutes, to discuss stormwater procedures. Well, that was the wrong time of the month, because we were busy with the MS4, that had to be filed by September 30th. So I did get back to him, and I had contacted Mr. Ferry, because if there was going to be a conference call, I wanted it to, to have Mr. Ferry present, because I don't meet with, discuss things with developers alone, so there won't be any misunderstanding. As it turned out, we weren't able to set up a date and time. I did get in touch with Mrs. Easterday at the Planning Board, and this project, which we believe is battery storage for energy. Where the high-tension lines are off of Mained Lane, which, if you, if you've been anywhere near high-tension lines, you know there's a lot of work going on, not only here, but Rehopeth and in Swansea, and wherever those lines go, there's a lot of work going on. In any case, I got back to him, the dates and times weren't going to work. And then in the meantime, I talked to Mrs. Easterday and Mr. Ferry, and we determined that, first of all, he hasn't gone to the Planning Board. He's been to the Concom. However, it doesn't make sense to start talking about stormwater if he hasn't gone to the Planning Board, because if for some reason the Planning Board doesn't approve this, there's nothing for us to discuss. So I got an email from him just before I came here, saying he could not attend the meeting, and he's still waiting for that conference call. So I'm going to get back to him with an email informing him that it's premature to meet with or to discuss stormwater procedures when he hasn't gone to the Planning Board. I mean, the procedure is Planning Board, Concom, and Planning Board and Concom always says to develop, "Make sure you check this out with stormwater." So all of our stormwater information, the application for the permit, the bylaw, the regs, is all online. I don't know what else there is to discuss. We follow the procedures that are pretty much standard, and everything we do that isn't the bylaw or the regs is based on what planning or Concom has done. So I will get back to him and let him know that. Mr. Pearson, I wanted you to know about this, because this is a project that appears to be coming down the pipe. Mr. Pearson, I wanted you to know about this because this is a project that appears to be coming down the pipe. And Weston and Sampson needs to be aware that this is, we believe, a large battery storage facility that will be adjacent to and connected to the high tension lines that run through that section of Dyton where Mained Lane is. So I would assume down the road, if this thing goes forward, Planning, CONCOM, and obviously, if you do any work for them, the stormwater component will be something we'll be looking for.
Okay.
Mr. Ferry?
Yeah, just a point about it. So they did not go in front of Planning Board yet?
No.
Not even application?
Kerry said nothing.
And then number two, this would be the first, I think, the first project that we could utilize, Weston and Sampson streamline to a project as if we work for Planning Board and us at the same time?
Well, since we hired an engineering firm for the town, the procedure would be that Green Leaf, excuse me, New Leaf Energy would go to the Planning Board. As I said, they already went to CONCOM. I would have thought.
Well, because, can I object a little bit?
Yeah.
For us, they did not get like full approval for any work. It was literally just to approve the wetland resource area boundaries.
Okay.
That they can do, usually they do that ahead of time so they can determine the feasibility of the lot.
And then they'll go to planning?
Yeah.
Okay.
And we have them certify some varcoles.
Okay, so the, to come to us, to come to the Stormwater Committee now, still doesn't make sense to me because they've done preliminary, which makes sense for, on the CONCOM side, so that they can draw plans for the area that's going to be buildable or usable and then go to planning. But we, I, I still don't see any reason to come before us because if it doesn't get approved at the planning level, or if CONCOM says you've got a problem here, we got nothing to talk about until we're sure that this is, has the potential to be a viable project.
Right.
And everything else of our stuff, so to speak, is pretty clear. As far as stormwater management and all that. That company did, if you don't mind. Go ahead, Woody.
That company did have a public input meeting, maybe six, seven months ago here in this building. And there was a lot of residents here from Rehoboth because that property abuts the Rehoboth line. They seem to be a lot more upset than the people on the Dyton side of it. I happened to take a ride up there to take a look at the situation. And National Grid is doing a huge upgrade there. They already know that this power, energy, battery storage facility is going to go in no matter what we say or how we say it. National Grid, the town of Dyton can't fight National Grid. We don't have enough money. And they already know that. And they were quite cocky at the meeting, pardon my lingo. But there was a lot of upset people from Rehoboth. And they've already done all this preliminary work up there. If you take a ride up there and take a look, you'll see these people mean business. They get the state behind them pushing this stuff. And like you said, for them to come before this board before going to the Planning Board is a big mistake. I'm pretty sure that the Planning Board will also be working on the stormwater portion of it with Weston and Sampson. So before, it's a long way down the road before they come to us if there's any problems. I think that the Planning Board will probably handle all the stormwater part.
And then make sure you check with stormwater.
Right.
Because they always send a bad direction.
It's going to be one of the largest battery storage facilities in the Commonwealth.
Mm-hmm.
That's what I was told. It's going to be huge.
Okay.
The fire chief in both towns, Rehoboth and Dyton, are going to weigh in heavily on it. But I don't know how we're going to fight it. The government's pushing this.
I don't, quite frankly, at this point right now, I'm not concerned about us fighting it simply because this committee enforces the federal clean water. And we don't deal with DEP in enforcement. Enforcement comes right through the EPA. And I'll make sure they get one of these brochures that says, does your company need a stormwater permit? That's why we had them printed. And as we found out, yeah, they're the big guys, but nobody is exempt. So quite frankly, if it really gets to that kind of a situation, DEP has got to come down on the same side as EPA because EPA is the umbrella, okay? EPA controls stormwater. I know at the local level that Conservation Commissions deal with DEP, which is fine, but they do not have primacy for stormwater. So as I say, we'll see what happens. The only thing I could think of why he's been so insistent between emails and all that is because he may have, I'm sure he does know people in the Tonkin Conservation Commission and individuals in Tonkin who do developments, and they're probably aware of Dora Estates. And how Dyton got involved in that and said, timeout, timeout, that's our water supply. And the Tonkin CONCOM did work with us to get the plans changed prior to giving them the full go-ahead. But quite frankly, that was in, it was through, we found out about that inadvertently on a site visit when Chairman of the CONCOM said to me, I was on the that said, do you know what's happening up there? So that got us involved. So and the fact that this thing is sort of Dyton and Rehoboth on the line and all that. I think they may have heard about the Dyton Stormwater Committee and it trying to feel things out. I mean, we don't make the rules, but we do enforce it. So we'll see what happens. Mr. Pearson, have you any experience with, with battery storage units to the kind of magnitude that this project seems to be developing into?
For me personally, I've had, I've had experience with battery storage on a smaller magnitude, usually as sort of an ancillary component of of solar energy projects. I can't say I've been involved in as like a large-scale standalone project.
I guess from what, what are you saying? This thing is going to be the largest around and is going to be located in Dyton. We, battery storage is part of Brook Street. And, and that's another thing. Anyone that looked at Brook Street and battery storage, we all know they had to acquire other property because where they placed their battery storage was too close to the woods. So they were, they acquired property, woodland to the west and had to clear a section as a fire break. So I'm thinking he's just, he's, he wants to check on some things and find out where we're going to go. But again, I'll send the email out and let him know, next step is the Planning Board. And continue working with CONCOM. And at the appropriate time, we'll get involved. And we may attend meetings of either of those boards, just so that we're up to speed on what's going on.
Yeah, from what they told me, they're going to take the power from the grid, put it in the batteries. And then when there's a peak demand for power?
Yeah.
They're going to send it back up.
Yeah.
How many acres do you think it is?
Oh, I don't know exactly off the top of my head, but a lot, it's a big, it's a big chunk. Did you go up there with me, Dave?
Huh? No.
I must have went by myself.
Listening to that informal meeting.
Yeah.
And there was tons of our buddies, Dyton and Rehoboth people.
Right.
That, there's some opposition to it, that's for sure.
Lisa, do you know how much land we're talking about? Because you said there's wetlands and varroa pools and all that stuff.
There was a woman here, her husband was on the Board of Selectmen in Rehoboth. She was very irate and she kept saying things. And how come we didn't know about it? And on the Rehoboth side of the property, they're already building infrastructure for this. And I said, how could you not know anything about it? They've already built in on the Rehoboth side.
Okay, but I know this, this much about Rehoboth. Rehoboth has had, for some reason, I'll call them three connections to bring power into the town. And so when they have a power outage, it's not like here in Dyton that we, TMLP might be operating in National Grid, the section's down or something like that. Something about the way it was, they brought electricity into the town. I mean, the whole town could get wiped out at the same time. Because there weren't these, I'll call them safety methods or connections. So when I was on the Board of Selectmen, I can remember being at a Rehoboth Selectmen's meeting. And the agenda item was they were talking about, they were finally going to solve the problem of having three connections for electricity. And National Grid was going to be building in Rehoboth some kind of a structure that was going to be able to handle the power coming into the town, all the power.
And it's a substation.
Substation too. So that I guess if power went down, it wouldn't be the whole town. Like, like sometimes my power might go out, but the rest of the town's got power. While somebody else at National Grid, they're out, but the whole town doesn't go down. So Rehoboth was, was involved with that. But, and I heard about that years ago. I think they're just doing this all at the same time. There obviously was an opposition to Rehoboth residents about having a final solution to the, getting electricity into the town that was reliable. And that substation was part of it, but that, that definitely was Rehoboth. But now what they want to build is very close to Rehoboth. And of course, everyone's concerned about fires and things like that when you have battery storage. Does anybody else have anything on this? Alicia, you're trying to determine the acres?
I can't, I can't do it based on this. I have to do it on my computer.
Okay. Nothing else on this? Okay, so this will probably be on the agenda just for an update or if, if they finally come before planning. Whatever we find out, we can just share it with the committee. But I don't see this coming to us anytime soon. And I don't plan to have a conference call to discuss something that, quite frankly, is not ready to be discussed. Okay. Mr. Pearson, I think we're all set as far as all the things that I wanted you to hear. If you want to leave, it's okay.
Okay, thank you very much.
All right, thanks for coming.
All right, bye now.
Aye. Okay. Agenda Item 5C, 102 Sunny's Way Drainage. Anything new on this one? I think the engineers were going to be drawing something. Mr. Ferry?
Actually, I talked to him today, last week, week before.
Sometime.
So they did an exploratory dig to get the elevations of the utilities between the sidewalk and his property. No connection has been made, no question, I struck to yet. He's still creating a plan, getting ready for the RDA for Conservation, that should be happening very soon. He's also, his question was, actually, that's a question to you. He's filling up the stormwater portion for the connection. And whether it was an electronic or the three copies, because copies, give us the three hot copies. I'm going to get back to him if he wants something different.
No, that's fine. That's fine, Tom.
And that's where he is now. He does know a meeting schedule. I don't believe he has to wait for a meeting to proceed after he's done with Conservation.
No, as long as he can file the application.
And our application, we have to file about the connection.
Yeah, and sometime down the road, it would be good to have an update on, okay, he's doing the work or he's done the work, everything's fixed, you know? It's just so that we know that the, it got done and it's working okay. And the sidewalk is not tripping up little kids.
All that stuff I said is part of the plan being presented to Conservation. The elevation has to be all in that plan.
Okay. Is that on the agenda for tomorrow? Do you know CONCOM? Oh, he's not ready yet? Okay. What time does that meeting start tomorrow night? Okay. Okay, so we'll keep Sunny's Way on the list just in case anything comes up. I'd rather.
Where does those three copies go?
Well, one gets filed with the Stormwater Committee and the permit fee, that has to be identified. And I guess Elizabeth takes that and turns it into the town. I would think Mr. Agia would get one. One for the firm, one for Mr. Agia, one for you, if you're going to be involved with it, since there's a sidewalk involved. And if anybody else says, I didn't get my copy, we'll just make a photo and get it to them. Okay. So this will be another one we leave on the agenda, just in case anything comes up. I don't want to have an agenda posted and somebody come in and dither and say, I could have talked to you and it's not on the agenda. So this way it's easier to just say nothing this month and move on. So. Agenda Item 7, Approval of the Minutes for August the 14th. September 18th. We didn't do September, right?
It's almost done.
Okay, no problem. Is there a motion to approve the minutes for August 14th?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
You have a motion, second, to approve the minutes of August 14th? Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, aye, votes unanimous. Was Mr. Agia coming back or he?
No, he's, sorry.
Report card.
Oh. Yes, I sent him an email because I wanted to know.
No, he's stuck downstairs trying to talk.
Did you just pick up the coffee before the meeting?
Yeah.
We don't like coffee.
What's that?
I said, we don't like coffee.
Yeah, but you'd love to get lunch.
Sure.
That's my lunch.
I'll go get you one of them.
Especially when you smell popcorn.
We have a couple of crackers downstairs somewhere. Want a coffee, just coffee down.
Wonderful.
Just found it last week.
It was issued 5/3/2021. It expired two years from the date of issue. And so I get to get in touch with him and tell him to, unless there's been.
Which one is this one?
Brook Street. Unless there's been an update. This is what Jim had.
Yeah, I do remember there was an extension. So there's probably one more.
I'm going to send an email to Weston and Sampson. They've got the records because when we hired them, that was their first project and I sent everything to them.
Yeah, that's two years expired, yeah, the extension.
Before I send that email, I will find out. We may have to look back at the minutes too, but don't do anything until I get in touch with Weston and Sampson. Are there any unanticipated items that anyone can think of? So I can give you an update. I was at BP today. And one of the things we're going to have for giveaways is to have coloring books made. And this is to give something to the really small children. We've kind of hit different levels, school-aged children. But this I got off the EPA website. It's got the little EPA blurb on here. Excuse me, I'm going to pass this around so you can look at it. Excuse me, I'm going to pass this around so you can look at it. This one's on cod stock, but we're not doing that. It's too heavy and it's too expensive. So if you want to pass it up in the back, I'll send it this way. So I got this off the EPA website. And this character in the boat here is Thurston.
My name is Thurston.
And it's got, it's a coloring book. It's got some puzzles and some activities so the parents can sit with their kids and do these. We're going to, we've already ordered, we get 200 coloring books and 200 packages of four-inch crayons, kind of like the crayons you see in restaurants when they give the kids a placemat. So we won't, I won't give these all out in, at the Arts Festival, but I will have these, the stuff I'll give away at the Arts Festival will be the leftover bags. And we've got grippers.
Frisbees.
Not many frisbees, but whatever I can find so we can clear that all out. The other thing is, in this, in this, there's two blank pages. And one's going to be called an activity page and it's going to tell the kid to draw their own version of Thurston. And the other one is write a story about the picture you drew about Thurston. So this is, again, here's the answers to the puzzle. So those are just the drafts that I got today when I was at BP. And so she's going to send me a real draft. On the top of that, where you, on the very top of the front page, you see that round circle up in the upper left-hand corner? That's going to be the town seal. It'll say Dayton Stormwater Committee. And then down the bottom, it's got that logo about the EPA. And that will appear on every page because I said, let's give them credit. That's where I got it from. And then the front page will also have the little blurb about that the, it was printed by students at BP like they usually put. So that's for the Arts Festival. The calendar, I took the pictures today and I had loads of pictures. So I left August, September, December blank. So the kids can look at their pictures and decide what they want to go there. November is a question because at the last minute, somebody gave me a photograph of the Aurora Borealis the other night. I don't know if they can, I'll edit the picture sufficiently because it was taken through a car windshield and there was an oncoming car. So you've got headlights, but the pink-red Aurora, I would say the car was going west, is incredible. And since this isn't something we're going to see, I don't think, often. I'm thinking about, I asked her, I asked the teacher to please do what she could to enhance the photo, to get rid of stuff. But I'm thinking we're going to go with it only because it is the Aurora. And it was, it's so rare that you see anything that brilliant. That would be November. But to give you an idea, I have a photograph off Main Street. I've got one picture of Tremont Street. This was before they put all the poles in for the power solifan. So it's Tremont Street going west towards Williams. It's a bright sunny day. It has snowed, but on the right side, there's foliage and it's fine. On the left side, it's still winter because the sun hasn't melted the snow. It was, what a picture that was. And I don't know the lady who sent it to me, but I said, whoa, there's a goodie. I got a great picture from the Aggie School. And I don't know how that happened. There's either a fog bank or a cloud bank that rolled in. So you see the Aggie School lawn and some trees and there's a big piece of farm equipment. And I don't, I have to look close. I don't know if it's harrows or plows, but anyhow, it's parked there. There's a little patch of snow. The lawn is still yellow looking, so it's maybe March. But then it goes towards the river, but you don't see the farmland. There's this big fog bank or something there. But then beyond that, you can see the other side. So it's really cool. That was taken by one of the teachers at the school.
Did you send your Monarch last year? Was it too late when I was going to?
The Monarch wasn't taken in Dayton.
Yeah, I did. I took one in Dayton.
You didn't send that one to me.
Because last year I was going to send it. I think it was too late, so I have to send it.
You sent me one, but you told me it wasn't in Dayton, but that was over a year ago. But I didn't have it, but that's okay because
Is it too late if I send it tomorrow?
Sorry, should they run into the draft? But send it anyhow because we get a lot of pictures that people have sent.
Okay.
I mean, beautiful, beautiful pictures. I think I took on the thumb drive, there's like, I don't know, 26. And we only need 12 and a cover. So we got some great pictures. We got a good one for Halloween. It's a creepy tree.
You need some of Roshi trolls.
Oh, that's okay too. So we got one of rocks with a snake skin on it, all dried up and shriveled. So and Memorial Day, I've got the grave of Mr. Anderson and with the metal on it. And then I've got one that Lisa Tetro, who used to be in the Sess's office, took. And it's one lone little flower and there's a bunch of rocks and it's very rough, but in the middle of it is this gorgeous little delicate flower. But anyhow, she's going to try to get that done. That I will pick up and not do email on that. So anyhow, the coloring books are about 70 cents a piece. And then there's some incidental charges like disposal of hazardous waste, whatever. And then the crayons. So I'm thinking about maybe $200 for the whole project, but we'll have those for a few years because they're for little kids. And I'm not expecting to see a lot of little kids on November 3rd, but we will have those. And that includes the cost of the crayons too. Any public input? Anybody have anything? Yes, Mrs. Nakora.
Hi. May I approach?
Certainly.
This is for C. I just don't want it to go. Yeah, we didn't do it, did we? We did 4B. We do what it goes? We did a little job, yeah.
I wasn't, let's
No update. But we didn't do 4C.
Okay, so whoa, 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 where did this come from?
That's when we did the site visit.
But who had this? You found it in the files?
No, I was given it when we did the site visit.
We did the site visit. You told us to bring it to the meeting.
Oh, oh.
That was in the box at the site.
Yeah, I've got, I skipped, I got a big check mark and I went right through 4C. We've got to go back and do 4C. No public input. All right. Agenda item 4C, sorry that I put a big check mark and messed that one up.
Because I checked that just now thinking I must have missed it.
Okay.
Oh, you missed it.
Please, Mr. Baptiste.
Not be happy. Agenda item 4C, Review Discuss Act, 2162 Horton Street. Final report, closed stormwater permit. So this is a home that sits way back off of Horton Street. Family name is Baptiste. And they were issued a stormwater permit in October of 2021. And they did extend it through the, I believe it's through the end of this year or through November. In any case, the property owner got in touch with me and said, everything was all set, that Lisa and Tom had done a walk-around and he wanted to know if there would be, he requested a final inspection and then a vote to close the permit and sign off and all that other good stuff. So that's what Heather just gave me. So the final site inspection was done on October the 2nd. And it was Mr. Ferry and Mrs. Caldonia and I. And Heather was there to take the notes. There will be just a brief write-up of the site visit so that we can just accept them and put them in the record. They're not official records, but we do keep notes of site visits. So everything was fine. The soap stocks were still all around the perimeter. We walked the perimeter. We went down to the bridge over the little stream. Everything looked good. Do you have anything to add, Lisa? Okay, so I need a motion to close out the stormwater permit for 2162 Horton Street.
So motion.
Is there a second? Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye, aye.
Votes unanimous. So I will send, I'll give this back to you. I will send a letter to him and give that a copy to you after Tom signs it. And we will send that off to the property owner and tell him he's all set.
Keep it local.
I got to tell you, we walked around that perimeter and I pointed out to him, I have not seen as much princess pine growing in the woods as I saw around the perimeter of his property. Because it was where I grew up, there was tons of it. And then there was a big gravel pit opened up and all the dirt that blew through the woods killed all the princess pine. And he's got loads of it up there.
How about deer tracks? You see many?
He's okay there.
Princess pine was covering.
We're only talking about flora, not fauna.
I showed him where my scan used to be.
Oh, yeah.
We told the property owner to be careful what he discussed because of, you know, membership on the board and all that. Any correspondence? Nope. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn. Begging.
All in favor? Okay, motion, meeting adjourned at 2:08. Thank you, everybody.